for purple mountain majesty above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and round thy good with brotherhood.
You are ready?
From sea to shining sea. Oh, beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountain majesty above the fruited plain.
Good morning, it's nine o'clock, we're gonna call the Board of Commissioners' meeting to order. For the record, there is a copy of the Open Meetings Act here on the north wall, for anybody that may need it. In the back of the room, behind the partitions now, is an automatic external defibrillator that's available. And also, if you have cellphones, we ask you to please turn them on vibrate or turn them off with that, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now call the Board of Equalization meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, June 19th, 2018. Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, July 10th, 2018, as the date for hearing on certified assessment corrections. What's the will of the board?
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Just another reminder to those watching on TV, Commissioner Boyle's voting light does not work, but he did vote yes, as well as the rest of the commissioners. Motion passes.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an item for citizens to comment on an agenda item related to the Board of Equalization that is not officially listed on today's agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll go to resolutions D, E, F, G, and H. What's the will of the board?
Motion to approve.
And does that include adjournment? Motion by Commissioner Boyle to approve items D, E, F, G, H, and adjournment, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, oh, there we go. Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes.
We'll now call to order the Board of Commissioners' meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one, minutes and claims. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners' meeting held Tuesday, June 19th, 2018. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, July 3rd, 2018. What's the will of the board? Moved for approval by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Craft. Please vote.
Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes. Consent agenda. We need to add an item, so I found the paperwork, Mr. Clerk, so I'll read it. We need, I need permission to add to the consent agenda an item to be labeled after P. That item is approval of a designated liquor license for the Irvington Byattier Fire Department at 911 Freeman Street, Omaha, Nebraska, for an outdoor street dance event to be held 7/21. You want to explain the circumstances in the came to you, Mr. Clerk? Sure, Dan Ash County Clerk. We got this paperwork yesterday, which would have been tightly filed for the fact that the only other time, we don't meet again after today until July 10th, and because of liquor control commission deadlines, we would need to vote on it before then, and this is the last time we meet, so that's why we wanted to add it on to the agenda today.
Is there a motion to declare an emergency? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Boyle. There's a motion to declare an emergency and add this to the consent agenda? Please vote. Sorry, hold on. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I just have a couple of brief questions on...
Well, we're adding an emergency item first.
Oh, okay, fine.
Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes.
With that item added, is there a motion to approve the new consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Just a couple of informational questions. On item B, a resolution authorizing the chair to enter into a professional services agreement with Heartland Workforce Solutions, Inc., to provide career readiness to eliminate disparities programming for eligible individuals in Douglas County. I'd just like, you know, for the public to know anyhow, and I think this is Chairman Rogers, your proposal. What exactly is involved in that? Eliminated disparities programming for eligible individuals in Douglas County?
For the last four years, the Douglas Sarpie and Washington County signed a joint agreement for the Workforce Investment and Opportunities Act to make the mayor of Omaha the chief elected official over at Heartland Workforce Solutions. It used to be known as Job Training Partnership Act back in the day. For the last four years, the city has contributed somewhere between $500,000 and $450,000 toward a effort to try to get specifically at people needing job training in certain poverty areas. We've met, we've put in on that for $30,000 over the last four years. This is just a continued part of that, and what it's done for us in some respects is also the report that we had from the Board of Corrections last week, when it was stated that they are working with Heartland Workforce Solutions. This is a part of that effort.
And H through L are a series of interlocal agreements between Douglas County, City of Omaha, City of Rawlson, City of Bennington, City of Valley, and the Village of Waterloo regarding library services. And I think this is, Ms. Carlson, could you tell us exactly what we're doing here?
Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator. These are contracts that the county board enters into with the City of Omaha and neighboring areas for library services. And what it is, is the county can levy a tax pursuant to state statute to assist in paying for those library services. It's a seven-year agreement, and we've been doing this arrangement for some time.
So, our mill levy for a library, which is fairly minor, is governed by this agreement. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's a, I believe it's a separate tax that's, that is implemented for that purpose.
And if my understanding is correct, I recall that that mill levy actually was slightly reduced in the last go-round, is that right?
I would have, I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
It bounces around a lot. May I?
Sure.
If I may add to it, because population figures aren't taken accurately every year, and this is based off the population of unincorporated Douglas County, which is the only place this tax is levied, it's only on residents that aren't in any city. And because those figures can bounce a lot when we get a new estimate, it may be quite a bit off from, you know, every time Omaha annexes, we think the population's going down, but it really isn't, it keeps going up, and so that gives us sometimes a little bit of discrepancy on what's the best number to use for the population for this year, and it can vary from year to year.
Okay, but the trend has generally been that population decreases over time.
No.
The population goes up and down?
Mostly up. That's about 49,000 people.
Okay. And that mill levy reduction last time around was based on what? Do you have any idea?
We, well, yeah, I wrote the agreement, so I do have an idea.
That's good.
Omaha, we figure every year, what did Omaha spend last year on library services per resident? We take their total library budget, divide it by the number of residents, and say they spent X number of dollars last year. That will be what guides us for the following year. We will strive to collect that same number of dollars from every resident of unincorporated Douglas County that is then divvied out between the six libraries in the county. Omaha gets about 90% of it, but that's why you're seeing Waterloo, Valley, Bennington on here, because they also get a share of that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, there's a motion second, please vote.
Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes.
Item three, recognition and proclamations. Item A is recognition of the following county employee who's retired. Angela Brahman has retired from the Douglas County Health Center after 37, 38 years of service. Is Angela here by chance? Seeing she's not, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Second.
And I want to thank Angela for her 38 years at the health center. Please vote.
Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes, and Chair Rogers, I apologize, we got a motion for Commissioner Boyle, but who made that second?
I...
Okay, thank you very much.
Item four, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens in the audience to comment on Board of Commissioners' related items that aren't officially on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. I just want to take this opportunity to announce that Constance Myrendorf from the clerk's office is gonna be retiring on July 5th, so I just wanted to take this moment to say a few words about her. She's only been with the county for about two years and four months, but even in that window, she was able to have a positive impact. So, prior to her employment with Douglas County, Constance had, a lot of her career was in education, and she even held some leadership positions at various times during that career. And so, back in 2016, when we were hiring for this position that she has now, I knew Kathleen Hall was gonna be retiring in the near future, and so a big thing that I was looking for was someone who could, you know, kind of help me continue to grow as a leader after Kathleen retired, because, you know, at this point in time, I'd only been clerk for about two or three months when we posted for that position. So luckily, Constance had applied for the job, and we were able to get her on staff. She was great from the beginning, I could always bounce ideas off of her, ask her for advice, and she's been a great mentor to me. There's several times where she brought suggestions to me about how to make a process more efficient, or, you know, some of the materials we hand out, she'd have suggestions on how to make the language more clear. Along those lines, she's made me a better writer. I think I was a pretty good writer before she started working for us, but if I ever have to write a letter or make an announcement, I always have her to look it over, and there have been plenty of times where she says, "Well, you know, this sentence would be more clear if you said it this way," or, "Actually, this comma needs to go here, not there." So, she always has a positive attitude, and she's a great teammate, and talk about being a great teammate. Not only was she always willing to take on task and help out her coworkers, but she even let her call, she even let us call her Constance instead of Connie. Most people, most people outside of Douglas County who know her, they call her Connie, not Constance, but our records administrator, her name's Connie Mayorga, and so when we, and they basically work in the same area of the office, so when Constance started, I said, "Well, do you mind if we call you Constance, because there's already Connie, and she works about two desks away from you?" And she's like, "Yeah, it's no problem," so. So anyway, enjoy those last set of committee meeting minutes that she sent to you, because those are the last minutes you're gonna get from her, and thank you, Constance, for your service at Douglas County.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Ash, for that. We will miss Constance. I think that Commissioner Boyle has frequently pointed out to all of us her great and assiduous attention to record-keeping in our committee setting, and I hope that we have somebody ready to step in there and do as good a job. The minutes are always on time and accurate, and good record-keeping is a hallmark of the clerk's office, and we really appreciate the job that she's done. We wish her well in whatever future endeavors she may go on to, but she's made a great contribution to Douglas County government in the short time that she's been with us, and set the bar pretty high for whoever you have on deck to step in and succeed her. But I appreciate you bringing this to us, it's, you know, never, I think, inappropriate to thank great county employees, we don't do it enough, we have a great complement of people dedicated to public service, and Constance Myrendorf is a super example of that. So, wherever she is, I wish her well, and thank you for bringing this up to our attention. Thanks.
Any other citizen comment? Seeing none, we'll move to presentations. We have two pretty thick presentations, and everybody asks to be moved first, but, you know, I'll yield to the police force since they need to be back on the street, and we'll go with item A in presentations to discuss discussion regarding the potential changes to the Douglas County Civil Protection Custody Program. With that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Borgeson, who's been working on this, if she wants to say something at the beginning of this.
Actually, we have representatives here from the program as well as the Police Department, but Commissioner Duda and I have been meeting with this program, and civil protective custody program used to be ran by Catholic charities, and Douglas County took it over when they exited their agreement with Region 6 to provide that service. Since then, Douglas County has been working with the state to accomplish what items the state is telling us we need to do in order for payment to be received. So just so you know, in order to get reimbursement from region for dollars of services provided, you have to have a license, and in order to get a license from the state of Nebraska, with a service, you have to have accreditation from a national accreditation body. And there's a whole lot of technical issues involved in that that we can talk about if somebody wants to get into it, but we are having a difficult time acquiring that accreditation in the way the current program is ran. So there are a multitude of issues that the state and the accreditation body is asking us to alter in how we run this program, which the problem with that is that it comes with a cost, and it's going to increase our cost of running that program. And at the same time, if we don't have that program, then it lends a problem for our law enforcement officials who now have a safe and good service and place to bring people who are highly intoxicated in off the streets, make sure that they're safe, make sure that they sober up, make sure that we have a conversation with them about possible treatment in the future, and then send them on their way, or they may stay and go through our programs. So, there has been a lot of discussion with the state, because this program is gonna take a big turn in differing how it is ran, but we wanted to have this public conversation because there is going to be an increase in funding that is needed. This is not a mandated service of county government. It's been in existence for well over 32 years, I think it is. It has ran this way for that long with no problems, and actually, since we took it over, it has done extremely well. And again, the purpose of it is, an individual is taken into custody who is highly intoxicated on the street into a safe place where they can sober up, be monitored, and talked with about treatment. So if we don't have this, that is a huge problem for this community. And where do these people go? Well, they probably go to the ERs, and you can guess how the hospitals will appreciate that. They will not be able to come to the jail, because again, most of them have not committed a crime, and jail, again, is not the proper place and should not be the de facto place for, again, placing someone, in this case, with a substance abuse disorder. So, we are working diligently with the City of Omaha, especially the law enforcement community, to see how we can work together to make sure that we do and are able to continue to provide this service and meet all the criteria that the state now, all of a sudden, out of the blue, decides that we have to meet. And so, with that, I would invite Terry Speck from the program, she is the administrator of the program and has done a phenomenal job, and Mike and anybody else from the center that wants to come. Taryn Peterson is here from Region 6, and then we have city officials that are here, both from the city law and law enforcement and third-floor mayor's office. So, Terry, did I explain that well enough? I don't want to get too technical, but if there's something I missed on the technicalities as to the frustration level we're feeling with this, just go ahead and take it.
Okay. My name is Terry Speck, and I am the Detoxification Services Director. The program transitioned to Douglas County on February 1st of 2017, and it was a day or two before that time that we found out that there were gonna be some issues with the licensure and accreditation. So we have been working with the state and the region. We have been working with the state and the region since that time to see what we have to do in order to meet those expectations. I might add that in protective custody since February 1st of 2017, we have had approximately 1,925 admissions. That is 976 individuals, so we do see people return. Of that 976, 87% is homeless. I have a very compassionate staff and very supportive staff, and they work very hard to ensure these clients have a safe detoxification and really encourage them to go on to the next step. I do feel like this is a very critical program for this population. Our average length of stay is about 13 hours. We keep them until they either blow a zero or they're able to move on to another safe place. So in question is the locked doors. Currently, when the police officers bring a client into the civil protective custody program, the clients are locked in a room. For accreditation and licensing purposes, a locked room is considered seclusion, and seclusion is pretty well kept for those clients who are aggressive and, you know, either verbally or physically aggressive or possibly out of control. Although we do see that upon occasion, and under the CARF and licensing expectations, we would be able to continue to seclude that clientele, the majority of our clients are not aggressive when they come in. So that really is what's, what is at stake. Again, working with the state, Region 6, and CARF to ensure that we make the changes in order to meet the standards and the regulations. We have changed and rewritten policies, including a seclusion policy. We're making several changes to the facility to secure the environment. It even includes rearranging for better observations for clients who are gonna be able to come out of those rooms now. Locking doors that were not locked and unlocking doors that were. We've moved monitors, a lot of education for staff, including different de-escalation techniques, when and how to seclude a client, and violence prevention intervention. We are looking at increasing staff by adding security, and we have also called several other detox programs across the country to see how they run their programs, and I will say we have a lot in common, and we have a lot that is not as much in common. So, we're continuing to communicate with other detox programs, and then also recently, we've had a CARF consultant in to meet with us, with the state representatives in the region as well. So we are moving forward with the changes. Obviously, there are some concern, but we know our clientele, you know, needs these services and also deserves the care.
Could you define CARF?
CARF is an accrediting body.
Right, because the public doesn't know it. That's been explained to us, but please.
Okay, yes. CARF is an accrediting body for residential-type facilities, and they have specific regulations all the way from administrative to client care to how you write different plans, you know, QI plans, that sort of thing. And there's about 1,000 regulations that you have to meet in order to be CARF accredited. They come in approximately every three years to do that. In December, we did go through CARF for the voluntary social program, and we did earn that three-year accreditation. Other accrediting bodies are COA, which is Council on Accreditation, and the Joint Commission. So CARF is one of the three accrediting bodies that we could choose from for this program.
I got, Claire, I got you down for some reason first, then Kavanaugh, you got, do you have a question?
Comment, whatever.
Please, now, if you want to.
Well, we've got great people doing great work on an important job. It's not the county's responsibility, and therefore, this is kind of a tough one, when what we are looking at now is, in my mind, because a state bureaucrat figured out that they've been wrong for 20 years, they aren't willing to make any changes, and therefore, we have to go out and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on security that we don't need today, because some bureaucrat down in Lincoln says you can't lock that door. And we say, "Everybody's been doing it for 20 years," and they say, "We didn't know that, so quit doing it." I would like to be joining with Lincoln and Lancaster County, who a week or so ago, I mean, this is the only other detox center in the state, is my understanding, and suddenly the state's saying, "This is how you gotta do it," and both detox centers are saying, "We can't, we don't, we never have, we can't," and I'm not seeing one inch of bending from the state. I think we should be joining with Lincoln and Lancaster and making a scene, bringing to people's attention the ridiculous additional expense that the property taxpayers of Douglas County are going to have to shoulder because of some state bureaucrat saying, "I don't want that door locked." I'm upset with the whole thing. I am big fans of our staff, we have great, great dedicated staff. This is your calling, I am in awe of the work that you do, and I want to see you be able to do your work and to do it well, but I don't want to shoulder our taxpayers with this absolutely unnecessary expense. And therefore, my first thing is to go to the state and say, "Something's gotta give." I don't want to be so bold as to say, "We're gonna walk away from this responsibility, it's too big, we can't make idle threats," and I don't intend to walk away from it, but I think it's just ridiculous that some bureaucrat is making us spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, and what do they care? If the state doesn't give us any money because we don't live up to their expectations, that's a good thing from their perspective, not from ours.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I would echo many of the sentiments that Commissioner Duda just expressed. First of all, I want to say what a great job you do. I've actually been in the detox center, I've taken people to the detox center, it's a great facility, you do great work, and have for a long time. I was struck by the I was struck by the fact that, and we've got a couple of former mayors on the board here, that you keep the picture of former Mayor Bernie Simon on the wall down there. Bernie was a great inspiration for what you do and a believer in the value that you bring to our community by what you do. You do. It's valuable service, and thank you for performing that. That said, I couldn't agree with Commissioner Duda more that Governor Ricketts and his administration are way out of line in forcing this strict interpretation of apparently regulations that have existed for a long time, all of a sudden become a front-burner emergency for Douglas County and Lancaster County and Lincoln, doing good work. I mean, thank you for your help, Governor Ricketts. I really appreciate your help. But I think that, as Commissioner Duda pointed out, that we should approach the governor and his administration and say, "Look, we're doing important government work here." Rather than being nitpicking bureaucrats, why don't you work with us to continue this important service? Or are you saying that we shouldn't provide detox services to needy individuals in Nebraska? Because that seems to be their position. They'd rather have no detox services than work with us on a constructive solution to this. Omaha Detox, where you work, under Douglas County and prior under Catholic Social Services, it's been around how long?
I believe at least thirty years.
Okay. And how long have we operated under this secure patients policy?
To my knowledge, since the beginning.
Okay. And you're familiar with the program in Lincoln-Lancaster County as well?
Yes.
Same, as far as you know?
Yes.
So everybody has done this openly for a generation or more. And all of a sudden, this comes out of left field. Presumably, you're familiar with these regulations and have been for a long time, right?
Yes.
Anybody ever bring this up before?
No.
Have we made a direct approach to Governor Ricketts, as far as you know, regarding the outrageous stance of his administration? Okay? And what's their response?
If I may, their response is that they're willing to sit with us and figure out how to move forward together with this.
Well, that's great. Does that mean that we, as the Douglas County Detox Center, are still operating as we have for the last thirty years?
We are, yes.
Okay. And do you have a session scheduled with these state regulators, the bureaucrats, as Senator or Commissioner Duda pointed out? Or are you handling this?
They are ongoing meetings that have taken place, as Teri said, from the beginning. And so what will happen next, and correct me if I'm wrong, Teri, but after the consultation with the accrediting body, they gave us basically the list, if you will, of things that need to be changed in order, again, to move forward with that accreditation and then ultimately the license and reimbursement. And that's what we're working on currently.
Well, I agree with Commissioner Duda that we should take a public stand in opposition to this bureaucratic nitpicking by the Ricketts administration, and I would be happy to join with the board members that feel likewise in passing a resolution of that effect. Thank you again for the important work that you do. We must do what you're doing, and we'll figure it out. But it's outrageous that the Ricketts administration had created this problem out of thin air. Thank you again.
Commissioner Moore?
Well, I want to echo the support for what you're doing. It's extremely good and very important for our community. And I do support totally what Commissioner Duda said, as well as Commissioner Kavanaugh. And I just visited with legal counsel. I think what we need to do is look at what we can do through the courts, because that probably is the only way we're going to get their attention. I'm not sure, but I ask her to explore it if that meets with the people who've been working on this so hard, if you think that's the thing to do. I don't know how else to get their attention. And I'm sure the governor has no notice, any idea this is happening, so I just don't think it's on his radar. So although I do think his administration, the bureaucrats, kind of go wild sometimes and put their feet down when this is just not sensible. In my estimation, I've said this before, I've asked the commissioners that are involved, to me, what happens if we don't get this resolved is that people who are suffering from addictions will be on the street when the police try to pick someone up, no place to take them except corrections to an ER. Is that correct, or am I wrong?
That's correct.
So the police will have people suffering from these addictions in their car and the cruisers, and, I mean, reminds me of when the cold hit years ago and there was no place to take the homeless people, and we opened up a park pavilion. You know, maybe, is that what we're supposed to do? Open, ask the city to open a park pavilion and house these people who are suffering from alcohol and other abuse? I just, I think as a practical matter, it just comes right down to that. If we don't get this resolved, then when the police picks someone up, there's no place to take them. And I think, you know, the police chief and all the personnel here today are very concerned about that, I would think, as well as the mayor's office, Mr. Bealick, Chief of Staff. So anyway, that's my comments. And I think this is right down the rubber, cleaning the road, and we need help. This is not an unreasonable request. It's been the practice for so many years, and it just seems like good common sense. Maybe that's the problem.
Mr. Craft?
I saw Mr. Burbach writing the next headline when Jim Kavanaugh said that he'd been in the detox center.
Mike Doyle said that, too.
So I can see that in, on the front page. Okay.
Include me.
Okay, we'll include Mike in that. You know, our purpose, at least my purpose, of being involved in politics is to make our society, our county, a better place and a safer place. It's imperative that we do that. It affects all of us. Should we shoulder the taxpayers with it? And if we do, how will the taxpayers accept it? Would they rather that we shut it down? I honestly don't think so. I think they'd rather see us assess them ten cents or five cents or whatever it might be, a dollar a year. That's a lot of money. But I do think the general public, by majority, would want to see us help these people and not put them in jail and not put them in emergency protective custody and not have them go to the emergency rooms. And yes, we should have a joint meeting with Lincoln and the governor, like we used to do with Heinemann. Thank you.
Commissioner Borg?
I do agree with what Commissioner Duda is saying, but the flip side of that is, as we always say, things change. And the change, if you, and Teri can get into the facilities in which she has contacted, most facilities run the way that we are conforming ourselves to run based on these new requirements. And again, along with that comes the cost of that. So it's kind of half a dozen of one, half a dozen of another. We can fight not to do anything, or we can go ahead and make the changes and work with the City of Omaha to help with the increase in those costs. Because again, I think every single one of us has said it so far, is that this is a needed service and an important service for our county and the people that it serves. And so we can dig our heels in and not do anything, but then we run the risk, in my opinion, of losing the $450,000 that we currently get from the state in reimbursement for this service through the region. We run that risk, in my opinion, if we don't, again, kind of do what they're telling us to do, putting these conditions upon us. The governor is aware of this. I have talked to him personally about it. So he knows, and he, again, has said, "I will work with you." But you do have the bureaucrats down there who are pushing for these changes. What I'm more concerned about is making sure that the law enforcement community have, again, a place and a safe place, and we do have to make these changes, again, for all the reasons that we said, but we have to have a place for them to be able to bring these individuals. And back to your comment, Commissioner Craft, it is our job to make sure that the people that we serve have a safe place and are offered the programs to help with their addictions. And so I think this does lend us an opportunity, and you guys really have done a phenomenal job in rallying the troops down there and saying, "Hey, this isn't business as usual. We're gonna have to make these changes." You know, some are in, some aren't, some have already left. And that saddens me, but at the same time, there are just things that we have to move forward with for the bigger issue, and that is to make sure that we have a place for our law enforcement officials to bring these individuals and get them off the street and provide public safety for our entire community. So it's, I think we still can argue the points with the state, but I think that we need to let staff know that we're in support of moving forward with those changes and to conform to what we have to in order to keep that state funding. And I will tell you that it is an issue with funding because the Behavioral Health Division down there actually stated this really should be paid for out of the corrections facility or corrections budget rather than a behavioral budget because we weren't giving enough treatment. And so when we talked to them about that and told them what we were doing in terms of the treatment, I mean, I'm sorry, but someone who is highly intoxicated, maybe a little willy at the time, is not going to be real acceptable to someone talking to them about treatment. But as we're assessing them and as they're coming off of that, we begin to talk to them when they're able to understand what we're talking about. So there is treatment, and we have had successes of people going into the treatment. So again, I understand, I do, and, you know, you've said one time, "I walk into the fire rather than running from them." So I do that most of the time. But at the same time, I think our staff has done a phenomenal job of looking at facilities around the area to us and a little beyond that are doing it the way in which we're being asked to do it and are making great strides. And so I think, again, we have to work with our partner, the City of Omaha and, you know, the state, to make sure that we conform to what they're asking and that we work with the city in terms of additional funding to keep this program running.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes. Mary Ann, if I can ask you a question. You said, "In compliance with what they're doing around the country." Is that the unlocked program?
Yeah, when you talk about seclusion, most mental health and substance abuse providers and best practices, which I don't like that word, but that's what it is, have tried to move away from as much seclusion as possible in treating these individuals.
In their detox centers.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Commissioner Borgerson, what do you think about the idea? I know you said you talked to the governor about it, and someone else said something about the governor maybe not being aware of it, rather than talk about just Governor Ricketts. I mean, it's a state in Nebraska.
Right.
And what I think we should do is be careful about the statements we make, and my thought would be that maybe three of us try to see if there's a chance to meet with the governor for fifteen minutes, whether he might be up here because of the CWS, or we go to Lincoln this week. And I'm glad to try to participate, but if there's a couple other commissioners that are better to go down to see him, I think that's what we ought to start with, rather than, you know, criticizing. Let's at least make an effort first to talk face-to-face with him.
And I am all for that, and actually, our ask should be, when we have that discussion, which we threw out a couple of times to the state, but instead of looking at a way not to fund this, you are asking us to do business differently, which is gonna cost, and you should be increasing your funding as a partner with us. So again, they are the cause of this domino effect of increasing cost, and they should be at the table as well with supplying resources or providing resources, increasing the resources in which they're giving us.
And I appreciate your answer. And the other thing, which may not be a great idea, but I like it because it's my idea. To see Doug Kagan sitting here, if he said he'd ride with us, and I'll be glad to drive, too, I'd be glad to see us go down there this, I'd be glad to see us go down there and meet with he and whoever else he wants there, and let's do that face-to-face and at least request. I've always found that trying to meet with people when you have a difference or request is the best way to approach this. So I'll leave that in your hands, but I say we try to do it this afternoon, to call to set up that appointment when we're done with our meetings today.
And I think, Commissioner Craft, we can also ask, we've had the meetings that we've had thus far with Lancaster as well, and Commissioner Todd Wilchin from Lancaster. We can ask them if they want to attend the meeting as well. But I guess I just don't want to lose the importance of the, well, I'm sorry, it's not my turn to talk. I just don't want to lose the importance of the public safety issue to this program and the work that the staff has been able to accomplish thus far in what we're being asked to change. That's what I think we need to stay focused on. And I have no problem with going down there and saying, you know, "We need another $50,000 from you all to cover these costs," which is not a lot, but let's start someplace. We can take our figures down and give them what this increase in cost is. It's their mandate on the county. Again, this is an unfunded mandate, so we can make that ask in talking with them. I have no problem with that.
So let's call this afternoon. The other thing, I had another friend I'd like to take, a good friend, and that would be Ben Gray, the president of the city council, who happens to be here today. If he had time, it'd be great and make that a strong presentation.
Okay. Commissioner Moore, and let me, before I give it to Commissioner Moore, just let me note to the public, it's been said before, we don't have the traditional council here, so if you see auctioneering signs, and I may not catch it, it's because we don't have that. So the normal flow of conversation is well in order. Commissioner Moore?
Well, I don't want to take a lot of time. I really appreciate what's happening here, and I think Commissioner Morgan made a great suggestion. And I don't mean to be chartering a bus or anything, but I think there are other people who should show up. And frankly, I think the mayor's office should be involved. The chief of staff is a former chief deputy for the sheriff. I think the sheriff, somebody from there should be involved because this is a big impact. And the other elephant in the room, if I can politely say that, is the Omaha Police. I mean, if the chief or deputy chief showed up in uniform and seriously talked about, what happens? What's the outcome if this isn't taken care of? It means people are not cared for. And, you know, I understand, and all of us do, that we are the child of the state, and sometimes we feel neglected, you know, but we do have to step in and pay for things when the state fails. We've seen that at corrections and other places. So, you know, we're gonna have to do it one way or the other, so I appreciate what you say. But I like the conversation. I like the positive, what's happening here, so. But I would bring in some other people that could have something else, will have something else to say. The police, the sheriff, and of course, the city council, mayor's office, it'd be terrific. So. So we'll call Arrow and get a bus.
Terry, you got anything else to add?
I do not. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Now, there's some other representatives from the mentioned stakeholders here. If you want to add to the conversation, please do now.
Good morning. Michelle Peters, Deputy City Attorney for the city of Omaha. I've been working with the county and the city folks to try to come to a resolution. And I would also like to echo thanks to Terry and Sheri and their staff for all the work that they've done, all the boots on the ground, going back and forth with the CARF, the federal accreditation, and with the state. There's been lots of meetings and ongoing discussions. A couple of things, I just want to say that the city believes this is a very important program. Unlike maybe some other municipalities, the people that we're dealing with are really chronic alcoholics. This is not an effort by the city of Omaha to clean out drunk kids after the College World Series. We're really dealing with a more specific population that is in need. And so as to what Commissioner Borgson said, I think this is an important project, and it's important for public safety. As you know, being intoxicated in public is not a crime. So taking them to Dr. Foxxall at Douglas County Corrections is not going to help the situation. And even if there had been a crime that was committed, some sort of disorderly conduct, if they're that intoxicated that they can't move, he's probably not going to accept them in his facility. Under the state statute, what you're really supposed to do is take the person home. As Terry indicated, 87% of these folks are homeless, so that's not an option. So what we're really looking at is if we do not have a detox facility, it's going to be inundating the hospitals. And I feel like we'll probably get some pushback from them as well. So again, this is an important priority for the city of Omaha, for the Omaha Police Department, because it is a public safety concern. And, you know, we are willing to work with the county as far as coming to some sort of a resolution. We understand that there's going to be an increase in cost. It's looking to be a significant increase as to what the city of Omaha Police Department has currently budgeted for. So going forward, we would just simply ask that those budget discussions take into account an equitable share as to what the city is currently paying, what the city's going to be paying forward, if there's going to be any contribution or additional contribution from the state, and hopefully we can work together for a common purpose here. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on this topic? Commissioner Borgson.
I again just want to lend, say, I am very appreciative of you all sticking with us through this and sitting at the table through meetings after meetings after meetings on this. And as frustrating as it is, and again, Commissioner Duda and I have had numerous conversations about our frustration, I again lend my kudos, not only to the staff, but everybody for sticking it out and sitting with us to work this out. Thank you.
So with that, we can't take any action today, I think, but we have enough information to plan to formally be on the record at the next meeting. So for anybody that may want to add to that, just know next meeting we'll be planning to take formal action so we're on the record. I'm sure our view on this matter will get expressed through the paper within the next two days. Commissioner Boil.
I believe this is on point. I was going to bring it up during the finance session, but it's something that's been, since the naming of the CenturyLink Center after CHI Health, I am, first of all, I'm appalled, absolutely appalled, that a system that shut down a hospital that serves so many people in East Omaha on 30th Street suddenly comes up with millions and millions, to name an arena, thinking that, see that, and I'm going to go get my health care there. It's absolutely stupid. So what I'm proposing is that we legislatively go to the legislature, and I've had it with this, the reporting of, "We give $190 million worth of free service." Really? I don't really believe it, I guess. So what I want to do is go to the legislature and change the system of these nonprofits so that they actually give us 5% of their advertising budget. Give it to us so that we can care for people like this in the detox center. We will have a fund to care for those who really need care, and there's no place else to go. This will actually help them. Think about it. And we can put their name all over the project. We'll say it all day long, CHI, UNMC, you know, Methodist Hospitals, all of them, "You contributed to the solving this problem." And we could use it for the care of the mentally ill, which is a chronic problem. I was talking with Dr. Foxxall yesterday afternoon, and he showed me this, a woman who was taken to Emmanuel, and she's schizophrenic, she's about 60 years old, she's homeless, she has all sorts of multiple addictions, and she kicked a nurse in the stomach. And guess what happened? They called the police, and they took her to Corrections, and she is charged with committing a felony against a health worker. Here is this mentally ill woman sitting down the street, and she's charged with committing a felony when she acted out against a nurse in a mental facility. Now, what in the hell is going on? That's one problem. But the other is, we need this money, so the hospitals, I'm going to tell them, I'm going to work very hard, hopefully we'll get the support of the board, and tell them, "This is time for you to step up, and here's a really great way to advertise."
Thank you. With that, again, just for the public, we'll be forming some official action to be on record, and if anybody wants to comment, then they can have a chance. Appreciate your time. With that, we will move on to item C in the presentations regarding the proposal of the Justice Center Youth Center construction project. Will those that will be present, please come forward with that. I've been asked for a point of privilege. Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. Mr. Chair, some of us get very passionate about things, and we tend to talk on and on and on. After the presentation, we get to the question and answer position of the public hearing, could you please, so all of us have a chance to talk, limit any one of us at any one time to 10 minutes, so that after the 10 minutes, the next person can chime in for 10 minutes, the next one can. And most of us have timers in our cell phone. I believe we have a 10-minute timer up there if we wanted to. But would you please do that?
I'll try to govern accordingly, Commissioner Kraft.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to, Bruce, after you all and Patrick make your piece from Commissioner Borgson's explanation, I know there's a couple of people here that may want to say something and then they have to go to pre-council. So after you all give your spiel, I'm going to give them opportunity, and I'll open it up around for questions. Commissioner Borgson.
Well, I just want to start off by saying I'm excited to be at this point in having this presentation be presented to the county board and to our taxpayers. You all know, since I've been on the board, and Commissioner Duda can vouch, because we've been here the longest, that we've talked about this idea for a very long time. We have talked about it through our strategic planning process, and we have actually come farther in just this short period of time in which we've gathered people to look at this in a conceptual way, much farther than we have in the last 20-some years that we've done talking about it. And so we will talk about the need, we will talk about what our thoughts are, and we will talk about possible next steps. And so again, I'm excited to see the, have the presentation done and look forward to the comments and questions thereafter. So Bruce and Patrick.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgson. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, for the opportunity to present what we believe is an exciting project for the community. My name is Bruce Carpenter with HDR, and we were commissioned to do a site evaluation study for the needs of the county, primarily around the juvenile courts. And there were three project priorities, significant priorities established, not in any significant order, but three key priorities. And the first was to provide space needed for the juvenile courts. And if you've been, I know you have all been to juvenile courts, and it's a difficult situation for families, for the kids, and to carry out what needs to be carried out as far as the justice. The second priority is to improve the juvenile justice system in total, and in doing that, to bring all of the services around the juvenile justice system in one location. So you have the courts, the youth center, the attorneys, and all of the supportive programs that are needed for the juvenile system. And in doing that, improving the communication, almost instant, the opportunity for instant communication between the conversations that need to take place around the kids and the judicial system. The third key priority is having a vision for the long term with the facilities designed to inspire pride in the community. And this is something that is important for a civic building. The current Hall of Justice was built 106 years ago, and so taking a long-term vision, it's still being used, and I think it's been prudently used over time, but it's reached kind of a real capacity issue and has created real space needs. So we're at a point in time we need to take that same long-term vision. And it is about pride in the community, how we build these structures and the effort we put into these structures. So those are three key components, three key priorities that we used to move through this study. And we had considered many sites across the city, primarily in the downtown area that have access to the current campus and the current Hall of Justice and the building that you're in, the Civic County Building. We also included a site on 42nd and Woolworth where the existing youth center is currently placed. If you look at the key priorities, some of the things that we're used to evaluate are, courts require a high floor-to-floor space, so that eliminates many of the buildings and requires separate vertical circulation, separation for the judges and the kids and the family, that kind of public separation, which also makes renovation of some of the surrounding buildings difficult. The requirement for the attorneys to have a secure connection to the existing Hall of Justice also probably was a determining factor. So looking at properties that were close to the facility that we're in and close to the Hall of Justice, identified four primary properties. One is the MUD site that's directly to the south of the Hall of Justice. And we did a pretty deep study with MUD. They own the entire block, and there were negotiations entered into that didn't play out. The site four that's identified on the location map is what we call a library site, which has a historic, the historic National Register building that was the original Omaha Public Library. And then what's currently, the AIM site is identified as five, and I believe the six is Redfield Building. So those are buildings that are close that have a fair amount of square footage. I know AIM is currently developing a robust master plan for their programs in their building. That was originally the Grain Exchange Building, and then over time, Pacific Realty, and those have moved on. And so looking at the structure and the chassis, really, of those buildings and how they might be accommodated would create compromise. And I think we're living, the county attorney is living in a state of compromise right now with attorneys in five different locations, so it's hard to manage where those people are. So we really are not looking at a Band-Aid solution or a compromise solution, but something that has real value over the long term. So with that, we focused on the library site. And I apologize for the small size of the image, but this is a site bounded by 18th and 19th, Harney and Howard. And the idea would be to maintain the historical library building, and that would be occupied, is currently being negotiated with OHA to occupy that space. There would be a justice center that would house the courts, the attorneys, all of the supportive programs to the juvenile system. The youth center would be adjacent and connected, so rather than having the kids be placed and transported from their current location, which is a traumatic experience for the kids, we're talking about kids from eight to 18. So these are real impactful, in a negative way, experiences during a transportation. So in this case, they would, it would be just walking to the courts. This would provide more convenience for the families, whether they're coming to visit a child at the youth center or coming to court. They have this intuitive idea of where the services are provided because they're all in one location. And it creates, what we want to do is create more comfort or a comfortable situation as much as we can for the kids that are in a pretty tough situation, a pretty tough environment. We do, we are showing the development of 18th Street into a courtyard, public space, a green space. And this has to still be, this is an idea at this time, this is a conceptual plan, but the courtyard still needs to be worked through with Public Works and the adjacent property owner, which is MUD. But we feel it would be a tremendous amenity, again, for a civic building. You see that in front of, really on the same line at 18th Street in front of the federal courthouse, and this would extend it to the south. Again, providing some relief for the families and even, you know, we don't think about the people that are involved, that are professionals that are involved in the system, also needing a place of respite or someplace to kind of relax. So we have some images. This shows a blocking, what we call a stacking diagram, and again, shows the site bounded on the left of the green block of space is Howard and 18th Street, again, kind of depicted as a public courtyard. So we're looking at the elements that I described, a public space on the first two levels, the lobby and the supportive programs, the courts, and then the attorneys. And so this would also provide a And so this would also provide, I didn't talk about the blue line, which is a Skywalk connector that would be a secure connector for the attorneys back to the Hall of Justice, which is what they require. And then some conceptual images of developing a building that has contacts within the campus, so using materials and scale to work with the existing campus, specifically this building. We're looking at a building that would be nine or 10 stories with public space in the transparent area, that would be the common waiting areas and shared services, more on the public side, and then using materials around the enclosure that would be for the courts and would respect the strength and the justice that needs to take place in those areas. There would still, the intent would still bring daylight, the importance of lighting. Even in the youth center, which is the lower block, this would be the entrance to the youth center, the entrance to the justice center, the courts. But the quality of space in the youth center becomes important, and moving more to a rehabilitative environment and a punitive environment, which the current building was designed under, is the direction that corrections and detention for youth is moving. Then a view down Harney Street, looking from the northeast, looking south, you can see the M U D building in the foreground, the Skywalk connector, and then kind of the transparency of the public spaces in the new justice center. Another view, looking at the lobby space in the beginning of what would be a public courtyard, green space. We're, a big part of this is improving the efficiency in the movements, trying to have one secure point of entry, which would reduce the need and the demand for the Sheriff's Department, which provides the security in these buildings. And that, those kinds of things are ongoing expenses. The transportation of the youth is an ongoing expense. We're looking at, in conjunction with this, through the improved communication and improving the justice system, reducing the length of stay for the kids, what now is averaging 50 or slightly over, when the national average is in the 20s, we're looking at ways to improve that. What we're doing is good regarding the use, but there's always opportunity for improvements, and we're looking at every opportunity we can to improve the situation for those kids. So we're looking at a slightly smaller facility. The existing facility was designed under a different paradigm, a different module and representation, having one per 12 as a module for staff to kids. And the requirement changed a few years ago to have one to eight, so all of a sudden, that module system became inefficient by 25%. And we're also seeing a decline over time. The original facility was built for 144 kids. The average daily population, and you were all just presented this information last week at your meeting, is closer to 70 to 80. And there's some discussion on those numbers. And looking at programs like Home, where there's monitoring equipment that is effective, and using technologies for video conference to assess the situation for a youth in a home environment, if it's a safe environment, has come a long way. So you're able to have daily contact and make evaluations through video conference. So this is, these are all ideas currently being used around the country to reduce the population in detention. These kids are pre-adjudicated, so they haven't been convicted yet, and so that reducing that amount of time really is important in having successful outcomes. And the Home programs have probably the most successful outcomes for the kids.
Yeah, I was going to add, you know, obviously, we do have a Home program, and we have other programs we've instituted that have been very helpful in reducing the population. But, you know, the idea of location, 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 well, I would also say colocation, colocation, colocation. And that is the ability to co-locate services such as not only county attorney, public defender, probation, and then bringing in community programming, and then maybe even trying again the day and evening reporting that was criticized because it was in the youth center, well, now to be putting it into a justice center, not within the detention center, and trying that again, because I think day and evening reporting would also be very beneficial to reducing the population. So there are a lot of things that you can do through colocation that maybe would not be as efficient or as effective under the current structure. And the other thing I guess I would like to add briefly is that, you know, I've been in the county, I've been with the county since 1993, and I've been in the administration since 1998. And at least since 1998, I recall that we've been talking about even the need to build a new courthouse. And 15 years ago, that was next because of the cost. Well, then what did we end up doing? We ended up spending significant amount of dollars renovating the courthouse. We've gotten to the point now where you just can't do it anymore. And we know we're going to get more courts, we're going to get more judges and juvenile and district court. It's just going to keep growing, growing, and growing, and, you know, there comes a point where we have to do something, and the time is now to do that. Everybody knows me, but it's Patrick Bloomingdale for the record. I hope everybody knows me, spell it right. Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator.
Everything, it's important.
It's always nice to be seen, absolutely.
No, I, again, thank you for the opportunity, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding the project.
Councilman Gray, I know you're on the clock, so I'll give you any opportunity before you're 10:30 pre-council, if you want to chime in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, members of the county commissioners, my name is Ben Gray. I live at 4942 Nebraska Avenue. I am currently president of the Omaha City Council, but for purposes of this discussion, I'm part of the 501(c)(3) committee addressing this particular issue. And if I might use a medical metaphor, it's time for us to stop trying to put Band-Aids on a cancer patient. We have to recognize that it is time now for us to do something a lot more significant and a lot more serious than what we have been doing in the past. We are busting at the seams in the courthouse. It is that simple. It has been that way for a long time. As was talked about earlier, we have talked about building a new courthouse for a number of years, but because it was cost prohibitive, we were not willing to do it at the time. But the fact of the matter is, is we keep throwing good money after bad, and it's time for us to look at this very seriously and understand several things. First of all, it's important for this to be downtown. It is important for them to make connections with the various other entities within city government and county government, so it's important for it to be downtown. Secondly, it is important also, we talked earlier about being humane and addressing the issues of people who are intoxicated and how we address that. We need to be humane with young people as well, and we need to recognize the traumas that they go through under the current set of circumstances. So for us, it is important and imperative that we move forward. I am supportive of this effort. I am supportive of the fact that even the building commission, we recognize the importance of this to such an extent that we extended our mill levy to get it, to help, to do what we could to help get it done. So I'm supportive of this effort, I'm supportive of what we're attempting to do, and it's time to stop putting a Band-Aid on a cancer patient, and let's really work on making sure that we put something together that not only is going to be beneficial for young people, but will continue to be the pride of this city and this county. I'm supportive of it, and I would be glad to answer any questions that you might have. Keep in mind, I have to be at a council briefing in about 10 minutes. But thank you for your time, and I am encouraged by the work that I see being done, I'm encouraged by what we're doing moving forward. The other thing we need to consider very quickly is that this is, this city is known, and I have been to a number of different cities where people talk about Omaha and the strong private-public partnerships that we have in various areas. This is another opportunity for a strong private-public partnership, and I encourage us to move forward. Thank you all.
I got some questions, I'm sure, for Bruce, but any questions for Ben before he leaves? Commissioner Morgan?
I just want to really thank you very much for your comments here today, your work in the past on this project and talking about it. I think it's that important that we really focus on it. We've got to be certain about the square footage and all those kinds of things, but you're right on, Ben. And I really thank you because you don't have to really be here, but you know the need and the importance of this for the people, of this community, and some of those in big time need. So I thank you very much for leadership.
Commissioner Morgan, those of us in this room, most of us, all of us in here, care about young people. And if we care about young people, we need to do what's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I have for questionings, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Morgan. Bruce, you might want to step back up, I'm sure they're coming at you. Commissioner Boyle.
I want to say that this is an opportunity to, excuse me, give the public defender and the county attorney decent space. It is a real need, you know, we've had flooding in some of the space for the county attorney, and you said it so well. And so I just want to make that point, this is a very important part of that. And the connection to this building and to the courthouse system will make it really much more efficient. And what this really does, while we're not building a new courthouse, what we're doing is we are clearing space in the courthouse for courtrooms. And those of us who've been up to the juvenile court on the sixth floor, way up top where there used to be a jail, and we have one of the judges in a conference room, remodeled conference room, and we're just absolutely, we have no more room. And we need to, we need to take care of it, and this is the way to do it. It adds a lot of efficiency, bringing all these organizations together, and it will be very good for the children. And I want to take an opportunity to thank all of those who've been involved, and especially Commissioner Borgson, who's really, some time ago, we talked about this, and she ran with it and got it going. And it's really a wonderful opportunity, so, and thank you very much to Mr. Carpenter, we appreciate all you've done, so thank you.
I didn't know, I wanted to give, we have the chairman of the building commission, your chancellor, Christensen, I didn't know you wanted to say anything, please come now if you want to.
Good morning, and I would say to all of you, it's an honor to be here, and it's been a relatively short, but a very important privilege and honor for me to be part of the Omaha Douglas County Building Commission. My life in Omaha professionally has been absolutely committed to serving kids and community. And one of the things that has struck me from day one is that there is a general commitment in the county and in the city about serving kids and community in the best way. Having listened to all that's been discussed and done regarding the opportunity to have this kind of facility located next to the courthouse with a walkover, but perhaps more importantly, having everyone who is involved or potentially could be involved to help change the lives of kids going forward, to me, is absolutely critical. I know there are still details to be discussed and that sort of thing, but I think what you've heard from the people who've talked thus far, for me, says this is where we absolutely need to be, there may be some details to work out. The other thing I would say is that frequently, I think, this kind of conversation focuses on the children, the young people, and I'm not opposed to that at all. I love that concept. But this has the potential to change moms and dads and families and brothers and sisters as a result of bringing together for collaborative work to serve the entire family, which can happen in a facility like this. So I need, I know the details need to be sorted in particular areas, but I believe and I hope that everyone understands the future and the value of something like this, and thank you very much.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say I'm glad that we're having this public discussion. I think you may be aware of the fact that for the, over a year, I've been asking to have this discussed publicly and have exactly what you've just done put out there for everybody to see, because it's an important proposal. My understanding is that it is that, it's a proposal, we haven't taken any formal position on this. But now, at least the public is aware of the broad outlines of what you're talking We obviously have a space problem in our courthouse. We are currently building a new courtroom for the judge, I think that Commissioner Boyle was talking about, which should be done, I don't know, Mr. Christensen could probably tell us, it's under their purview shortly, which would be, all the judges are housed in the courthouse currently. That doesn't take into account the future that you're talking about and that we're all concerned about. And I think that it's important to look down the road for that. As you've indicated, the presentation that you had here and that we have hard copy, doesn't have a couple of the slides, and maybe you could provide those to us after the meeting. One of them is, there was a slide that showed, I think, six possible locations for what we're talking about. That's not contained in what we've gotten. I understand that everything doesn't get into everything, but if you could possibly get that. The other one is the kind of colored photo of the layer cake of the building is not contained in this, and if you could provide us with that as well, that'd be great. We have three big components, and you and I have discussed this prior to this project. And one is the juvenile court component and all of its ancillary offices, probation, et cetera, et cetera. Second is the county's lawyers, primarily the public defender and the county attorney, a minority of which actually have anything to do with juvenile court at any given time. And third, the youth center, which is currently at 42nd and Woolworth on a campus-like setting. These three components in your proposal here are combined into a campus that is now under this proposal called the Douglas County Justice Center, has heretofore been called the Douglas County Youth Center, it's gone under various rubrics, but these three components currently operate in Douglas County, not in perfect settings, but they operate, and they have for some time. What this proposal that you're putting forward to us is a long-term solution to the problems that exist and we know are going to continue to exist. And so I'd like to kind of take them one at a time. If we were to take a look at this proposal and those three components, this nine or 10-story facility that you're proposing contains the Douglas County separate juvenile court component, the county attorney-public defender component, and the youth center component. So overall... So overall, all-in, everything that you've just talked to us about is how many square feet?
So we're, there still needs to be detail developed on the individual programs to accurately describe the square footage. We've used some numbers out of a previous report and also some information of existing space that these functions occupy. So in total, we're probably looking in the range of 220,000 square feet, including the youth center. And again, that, that's a conceptual number at this point, but that would be in the range.
Sure. And the previous report is what has been called the Chin Report, which came out earlier this year. And basically, that dealt with all that we're talking about today in terms of they did an overview and talked to...
It dealt with, more focused on the juvenile components and not all of the county attorneys, all of the public defenders.
Sure.
And some detail, probation is part of that, assessment is part of that, but also some nonprofit organizations that are important to the juvenile system. So it would be all of those components.
Right, right. And if that were the all-in solution to, you know, the situation that we're talking about, the 220,000-square-foot campus, what's the cost of that?
Well, it's, and Patrick, I don't know if you want to address this, if...
Well, we're talking about, it depends on what you build, but what's been presented, it could be approximately 120 million, 120 million.
Okay. And...
Yeah, so that includes the Skywalk that goes along with the building.
Okay, all right. And I know that we're just in the initial stage. This is actually the first time that we've had an opportunity of public to discuss this particular proposal and see it. A lot of this information's the first time that we've seen it. We're not here to talk financing on this today, are we, Mr. Carpenter?
No.
Okay. You're just putting forward a proposal for a 220,000-square-foot, $120 million facility. No talk of the financing whatsoever. Is that right?
So yeah, that's correct. We're just talking about the, the concept that has been discussed.
Right. So going back to, you know, the original document that you referenced, the Chin Study, that I think the building commission actually sponsored, didn't they? Yeah. They, in that study, laid out a couple of options, particularly for the youth center component of what we're talking about. And one of them is what you're talking about in terms of bring the youth center downtown and put it in this campus. And the other is do something elsewhere with the youth center, more of a campus-type setting for the youth center, similar to what they've got now over in the Field Club neighborhood. We're looking at this in terms of, we're taking initial steps. Have you analyzed the alternative proposal relative to, let's do something where they're at, maybe refurbish what they've got, and do something where they currently sit?
So if you remember the project priorities and you look at it in that lens, it doesn't, it doesn't solve a lot of the other issues with the space required for the attorneys. That's a real space issue today. They exist, you're correct, but they're pushing at the seams. So it doesn't, it doesn't address that. It doesn't address the movement of, of the youth and the efficiencies or the, the success that is gained by having all of, all of these services co-located. So we did, we did discuss it, and looking at it through that lens, it didn't, it didn't appear that that would be a really great solution.
I appreciate that. You know, we have operated for a very long time, transporting youth from 42nd Woolworth downtown, and there haven't been any big problems with that. I don't think that there's any empirical proof that it causes any trauma to those children whatsoever. It's not walk across the hall and talk to them. On the other hand...
It's the most stressful, one of the most stressful events during their stay in, in a youth center.
I'd be interested in any empirical evidence to that effect, but I haven't seen it. The point is, they are in not so much of a correctional center facility where they're at. This brings them literally within sight of the Douglas County Correction Center. And if it's my understanding of the numbers that you've used relative to the population of this, what sounds like a smaller facility than the current one that we have at 42nd Street, there is maybe behind this a segregation of populations of the existing Douglas County Youth Center population, to wit. There is a population there that is charged with adult crimes, that is charged in district court with felonies. And there's a population there that's being adjudicated through the Douglas County Separate Juvenile Court system. Those are separate populations. My understanding is there may be an idea to segregate those populations physically if they are in this facility, so that this facility would only house youth charged in the Douglas County Separate Juvenile Court, and the, the youth charged with felonies would be housed elsewhere. Is that correct?
We haven't been part of that conversation, so.
Okay. My understanding is that the conversation has been that the separate population would result in the numbers coming down that you talked about, because these two populations are housed together at the Douglas County Youth Center.
Again, that hasn't been part of, of our analysis.
Okay. My understanding is that the individuals, not you, possibly from HDR, have been involved in a conversation that would say, let's take those youth charged with adult crimes and put them in a segregated unit at the Douglas County Correctional Center.
I, no, I'm not. I, you're, you're bringing information that...
Okay, I'm just asking. If you don't know, you don't know.
It's not...
Okay.
It's not something that we've discussed.
So how would we account for the smaller number of youth that, that you anticipate in this facility from the Douglas County Youth Center's current population?
So if you look, again, we mentioned the home program. If you look at the breakdown of, of the kids that are currently part of the average daily population, 50% of those are for possibly process violations, failure to appear, what we call, not misdemeanors, but that maybe could be handled in a different way. There could be more use of a diversion program that would help reduce the, the kids that are held at the youth center. So, so looking at that population and working hard to provide programs to assist in, in that end is, is what we would look at to reduce the population, the average.
Okay. Nothing to do with these youth charged with adult crimes, felonies?
I, I don't know if there's policy changes that could be affected, but we haven't discussed making any changes in that regard.
And you've, you've looked into the fact, and you mentioned in your remarks, that we have a relatively high, at least compared to the national average, length of stay of 50 days plus versus 20 days thereabouts. Is that right?
Right.
Okay. Inside that number is this population. It runs about, I think, 20-some of the 70-some that we have in the population of youth charged with adult crimes with felonies.
Yeah, I think we've heard the range of 10 to 15% or specific numbers.
It's about 22 today. In any event, they have a much longer average daily stay than the youth of being adjudicated or pre-adjudicated in the juvenile justice center. You're aware of that. That drives our number up to 50. And those, according to you, are going to be brought downtown with the rest of them into this new facility. Is that right?
We haven't discussed any other options regarding that.
Okay, all right. The idea that we have the best solution, a long-term solution, is also kind of, I think, informed by the idea that, you know, we're the government, and we do what we can with what we've got. So, you know, we operate on a lowest and best bid premise for a lot of what we do. What, if any, difference would that be using this 501(c)(3) model that is proposed for this building?
Patrick. So you would have, you know, as we have in the past, had a construction manager. I know that we had Schimmer and Associates, I believe, for the correctional center project that we did in the 90s. So you have a construction manager, you have an owner's representative, and then you have the construction manager who manages the bidding process. So a vast majority of the work would be bid pursuant to the public bidding process, but it would be done, instead of being done by purchasing, it would be done by whoever the county chooses to contract with as construction manager. So they would still take sealed bids, competitive bids, for the actual construction work, and it would be a public process, competitive bidding. Everybody, all companies who are qualified would be able to submit bids. So really, that's the primary difference.
Okay. Why would we farm out our bidding power that way? Why would, why would that function be, you know, kind of put at arm's length from what Douglas County usually does in terms of bids? Is there advantage to that?
Mr. Chair, if I may, when we started to discuss this, we were looking at, again, that public-private partnership component, and we looked at the model that the Cancer Center used, which was a very successful model to model this project after. And so that's what we started to talk about and start to work on the details. Again, I can tell you just from, again, the short time that we've been together discussing this, we are eons ahead of where we've been the last 20 years. And so just in that, in and of itself, shows us that this model is a good model to follow.
And I just want to say in conclusion, I really am glad that we're doing this today and that we're giving the public an opportunity to take a look at this project. We've had discussions amongst ourselves over the last year or so, and I know that there have been a lot of discussions between select commissioners and people in the private sector regarding this that I haven't been a party to. But one of the things that's come up in that, and this is particularly, I think, Commissioner Morgan's suggestion, which I've taken to heart, is, okay, well, what are our alternatives? I mean, we're in the marketplace of ideas here. Nobody has the perfect solution to everything. Nobody has a silver bullet. And he said, you know, if, if you're thinking about doing something different than this, what is that alternative? And I just want to say that I anticipate bringing to the board some type of an alternative, maybe not for the entire project, maybe for portions of this project. But I think that if we all work together in good faith, exactly what you're saying, serving the children best in the end is, is what we're all about. Doing that the smartest way and the best way, and maybe the cheapest way, would be kind of a goal that I, I hope that we could all share. But I, you know, I think that we'll bring something to this board, Commissioner Morgan, along those lines in the next few weeks, so that we can continue this discussion. I really want to thank you for the hard work that you've put in on this thing. This is an impressive presentation. Whether it's where we end up going or not, or whether parts of it are where we end up going or not, I guess is, you know, why we have these public discussions. But it's really good that you have brought this up to us in public, and I appreciate what the building commission has done. I take particular interest in their activities, because, among other things, my father set the building commission up when this building was originally constructed. And I take pride in the fact that over that period of time, they've done a good job for the public in taking care of this campus of buildings and looking towards the future, I think, is an important part of continuing that on in the 21st century. So thank you, and Mr. Christensen, thank you for being here today and talking to us about this. I think that...
Could I just follow up on a couple of things in the discussion? And one is concurrent to what would probably likely be a 36-month or a three-year design-construction schedule. That would allow us time to work on the program side of the justice system and, and provide any opportunities and efficiency that can be gained through the, the program side and the partnership with, as John mentioned, public-private partnership or Councilman Gray. The other, the other thing is, you mentioned the cheapest option, and I think there's a big difference between cheap and value. You know, I think what, what the community is interested in is, is value. You can get yourself in some difficult positions, and I, and I know that you probably use that, that term just in, you know, we all, we all use it. But there's, there's a big difference between cheapest and value. And I, and John mentioned that there's tremendous opportunity for value here when you're looking at a project that would have a life of, say, 50 or 100 years.
You're exactly right, Mr. Carpenter, and I appreciate you bringing that up. When I use that phrase, and you're, you're right, it's shorthand.
It's shorthand.
It's in the concept of lowest and best bid that the public sector operates on, so.
It's shorthand, but it's also a mentality.
I understand. And then many of the phrases that we've talked about here today are exactly that. So when we're talking about the lowest and best bid, the concept is we're trying to get the best thing for the taxpayers at the lowest cost for everybody involved. And, you know, whether or not this is the best and lowest-cost thing that we could do for everybody, that takes into consideration that we've got children at stake here that we want to do goodbye. We've got the community at stake, and you point towards the, you know, the pride the community can take in public building. I take great pride in this building and the courthouse. I would like to see this possibly be a, a building that we can take pride in. But at the same time, we are obligated to the taxpayers to husband their dollars. And I'm very jealous of that obligation. The private sector doesn't have that obligation. Public-private partnerships are great, but the public responsibility is for our dollars, okay? Nobody in the private sector has to answer to the public for how they spend their money. It's a free country. They can do what they want. And if they want to participate in this, great. But we have an obligation to the taxpayers here. And when we're talking $120 million, and this started off in the original report as an $86 million project, we're talking about the very real potential of a substantial tax increase. That's not a discussion we're going to have here today, but it's a discussion that we're going to have. And as public officials, we are obligated to have, that's why they have the lowest and best bid obligation. We're obligated to be very jealous of our responsibility and responsible to the taxpayers. And I intend to have that discussion in spades on this project going forward. So that's what I meant by lowest and best bid, yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate what you just said about value and cheap. That is an important statement, and it is a long-term commitment. And we know how long the present courthouse has been here. Couple things. One is probably the only member of this board, maybe only person in this room, Jerry Leahy. And it was not, not related to Gene Leahy, who set up the building commission, moved over to the interim city hall. And then Zarenski, and I was on the first building commission with J.D. Anderson in this room when we set that up. And it's been really important, Mr. Christensen. I appreciate you now serving as the chairperson of that board and how helpful it's been in our community. Two big projects are going on. You may not want to comment on this, but you've got Kiwitt that's going to move downtown, and they're now having pretty much weekly meetings as they go through their process, and the HDR building, which is nearly done, which are, Commissioner Kavanaugh, similar-type structures of substantial size. type structures of substantial size, as we see the HDR building going up. Both of those have project managers running the job just like what we're talking about.
That's right.
And the fact is, and this is important for Doug and the community and the citizens to know as taxpayers, they are being bid out, even though that project manager working on this with the contractor, Keywit HDR, who are very, very knowledgeable, companies still have that project manager bidding out 80% or more of the work. And if I'm not correct, please challenge me and say, no, Commissioner Morgan, you're not, and you can call me PJ. But-
Commissioner Morgan, you're correct.
So I want that clear, Commissioner Kavanaugh, that it isn't a case that we're moving ahead with something and we're not going to be publicly taking bids and making certain that we do it for the lowest amount. I said earlier, and probably 30, 40 minutes ago, when I talked for a couple of minutes, I said that I want to be certain of the square foot. We've got a long ways to go in making certain that square foot, because what I don't want to see us do is I don't want to see us moving someone out of this building and not knowing who's going to occupy that square footage in this building, so we're paying for two buildings. I also want to cover what Commissioner Kavanaugh said about options. I want to see any option that anyone has, citizen or otherwise, to tell us, here's why we think this is a better solution, and we'll listen to that. But I am going to say that times of the essence, and I had someone in my office yesterday talking about something they were working on on a project, they were telling me they would get quoted 5.5% to 6%, and it's an agent at NP Dodge that was there that's involved in some commercial buildings. He said a year approximately ago, he would have got the loan at 4% on 10-year money, amortizing over 15 years. Today, it's 5.5% to 6%. That's a big difference for this kind of a project. And that's why it is imperative that we see those options in the next few weeks at the longest and start to move ahead with discussion and seeing if this is the step we're going to take and working on those bonds. Because 1% on a $100 million project becomes $1 million. And we know there's already been increases in interest, so it's not speculation, and there may be two or three more. So that's, I think, all I want to say, and I do want to say, I thank you. I haven't been in all the meetings, I've been in some of those meetings, and I'm very appreciative of how far we've come. And Mary Ann, you've been an excellent leader. This, Commissioner Boyle, has contributed greatly to it, and others have. And I'm hopeful that we can put something together and make that commitment. I'm glad we made the votes to move ahead with the land because I think that's necessary no matter what we do for the future of this county and city. So, thank you for your presentation.
Mr. Craft.
Yes. And I think we're, it's beneficial that we have your expertise and your access to expertise. And you're all doing this all without taking any commissions or expecting any compensation. I know you've cleared that with the Accountability and Disclosure Commission. You know, Bruce, you said some very, very important things. The quality of space, that's very important. Using, creating a rehabilitative environment instead of a punitive environment. My gosh, look what we're doing to these young people when they come in illegally. By the way, according to something I read the other day from the USA Today, the average fine is $10. This is a misdemeanor for those people coming in over the border. $10 is a fine, and they're let go. So we're spending, what, $100, $200 a day incarcerating the parents, incarcerating the young people in tents? Yeah, I have no idea what we're spending. But it's a punitive environment. For our youth, we want a rehabilitative, yeah, I think I said it right, environment. Then there's the case of human efficiency, the efficiency of our time transporting back and forth. The attorneys having to go out to 42nd Street instead of just going down a couple floors or over a couple floors. You have limited access at 42nd Street because public transportation has to be transferred many times to get there. Many people who go do not have transportation, and there's more transportation to the locations downtown. We've studied that. So it's more inviting. It's more inviting for parental or guardian participation. Their guardian or parental participation is a very important part of rehabilitating a youth, very important. Then we have the efficiency that I think Patrick mentioned of co-location. You know, just location, 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 and co-location, and co-location. We've looked at, I think every commissioner here has looked at overhead maps of what will work. We've looked at outside spaces. Each of us that I know of has taken his own ability and looked at various offsites, and we've all come to, except for one, we've all come to the conclusion that this is the best site. No ifs, ands, or buts. It might be cheaper to do it five miles out, but I doubt it. I really doubt it. It might cost us a lot more because of the transportation and the inefficiencies. So I appreciate your insight. Thank you.
Mr. Carpenter, I want to thank you for an excellent presentation, did a terrific job. And while, you know, there's not 100% maybe support, but I think Pastor Kavanaugh's suggestions are, and we had a talk a couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Morgan and the Finance Director and me, and talked to Mr. Kavanaugh, and he's looking at other options, which is a terrific thing, and I appreciate that effort. I do, however, believe this is the appropriate course. And oddly enough, you know, I'm glad we're finally here today talking in public because, oddly enough, the problem was the open meetings law. And I volunteered several times to get off the committee and have Mr. Kavanaugh take my place. But we did have discussions in executive session, which we're entitled to do when we talk about real estate, so that we don't divulge all those things and with deep pockets, supposedly, we'll get charged more than we would have. So in any event, I'm going to keep it very short. I respect the time, and I think Mr. Craft made an excellent point. I just want to thank the members of the board, every member of the board, for participating in this decision-making. It is a good opportunity to have good public discussion. And again, I really appreciate the presentation you made. It was crystal clear and made excellent points. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Bruce and Patrick. And one thing before I get started on my comments, I just want to make sure, when people are saying that this is more of a rehabilitation view than a punitive, I don't want people to think that we're being punitive at the youth center. What we're saying is that the environment to which they are working looks more like a jail than what we could have the opportunity to design. So they're doing great things over there, and I just want to make sure people aren't taking that in the wrong context. One of the things that, this, again, has been talked about for a very, very long time, and any one of the commissioners could have taken the ball and ran with it. And so this idea that, you know, we're now all of a sudden springing everything on somebody, I take exception to because we are where we are today because we, one, had said in our strategic plan that we want to create a juvenile justice campus. There is a difference between a campus-like environment and buildings. And we had already said, again, strategic planning being the key in this conversation, which Commissioner Doodle loves to do strategic planning. We talked about that, and again, we have talked about that for a very, very long time. This is an opportunity, in my opinion, that we change philosophically our juvenile justice system and our justice system in general. And what I mean by that is Commissioner Rogers has taken the lead in bringing forth to us the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, which is, again, a process more so than a program. And it has shown that we have made great strides. We had a youth center that was 144, built, 144 beds, and we averaged about 181 at any given time, with the highest being in the 200s. And when Commissioner Rogers brought that process in, we created these alternatives for youth to be in these alternative programs versus into the youth center. What we see as the opportunity here forward is that we have a window of three years to look at and study those youth who are in our facility and what the need is to make sure that we have those community-based services or those juvenile detention alternatives in place, so they don't have to be in our youth center. We know that there are some youth that have to be in our youth center, and we get that. But at the same time, we can design a building and the programs around it to be, like Commissioner Craft said, that rehabilitative state. And that's going to take some philosophical changes and systemic changes that we currently see within our system. And again, Commissioner Rogers has led those discussions with people in the system to date, and I don't mean to speak or put words in his mouth, but I think he is anxiously awaiting that further opportunity to have those discussions and moving that programmatic piece of it and policy piece of it in a different direction than where we've been. The average length of stay, while we can start saying this is what the cause is or this is what the cause is, the fact is, the length of stay is double the national average. And again, this gives us an opportunity to take a deep dive look at who we're serving and how we can serve them differently. The private sector folks that are involved in projects on a public-private partnership relationship, they're taxpayers too. And they want the best value for your dollar and aren't spending willy-nilly. So I think in terms of commissioners, we can all state that we take to heart the obligation we have in order to make sure we're spending our taxpayer dollars in the best way possible and we're getting the best value for those dollars. And I will add that private sector people are taxpayers, again, I would say they're taxpayers and have that as a goal too. And lastly, I just want to say, Commissioner Morgan said, "Time is of the essence," and that's true. It is. And again, we can, this is a concept that's being brought forth, there's been plenty of discussion, this is the first public conversation or seeing of it, and I'm glad we're here too. I'm glad we're able to do this. But again, we can sit here and we can start delaying and delaying and delaying and delaying every step of the way we go, or we can move forward and create something that, again, serves our children and families, have the opportunity to serve them better than what we're doing today. And lastly, I will say, and I sound like a broken record, but I say this all the time, when I look at our juvenile justice system or any system in which we are responsible for providing services, my, the question I ask myself is, would my family member, would I feel okay having them go through the current system in which I am responsible for? And if the answer is no, then what am I going to do about it? And so I'm here to say right now that I think we can do better. And again, if it were for my family member, it should also be for those that we serve in the community, those kids and those families. We hear time and time again, I get questions all the time, what are you doing about? And this particular one is, what are you doing about juvenile crime? What are you doing about trying to find a better way for these kids and families? And this is the beginning of it. This is a environment to which we can create to better that system. And so I, again, am excited. Anybody on this board could go and go forth and do a project and then bring stuff to the board. It just so happens that I was the one that had the discussions originally, but it wasn't my idea. Like I say, this has been talked about for over 20-some years, and it is just that we have taken the approach to take the jump and do something about it. I'm excited about it. I am excited about the further conversations, and I'm excited about what we can do to reform our system to serve our kids and families better. So thank you, Bruce, for being here today, and thank you, Patrick, for helping in the presentation.
Commissioner Doodle.
Thank you. This really is exciting, and especially if we're not talking about the cost. It's a beautiful building that I would love to have. Indeed, this is a problem we've been, that's been growing for decades, and we're well aware of that. I believe this decision on how we move forward, for me as a commissioner, is going to be the biggest decision I ever make as a commissioner. And I got to sell a racetrack once. This is a once-in-a, well, you weren't really with me, we were just there together.
We were like, together.
In any event, once we start getting into the cost and the financing, it's going to become a little more of a challenge of rightsizing this. When I look at Lincoln Lancaster and, oh, 10, 15 years ago, went through a building that their Building Commission had built, it was a three-story building, and they only needed two. They had an empty story. And I just couldn't believe it. I thought, man, the taxpayers of Douglas County would never be, let you get away with building empty space and say, we'll grow into it someday. Well, of course, they did. We actually did the same thing with two mods at the jail. They were to be added on later. We said, let's do them now, and sure enough, we needed them. We did two more stories on the parking garage before we actually started building it. Sure enough, we needed them. We are indeed in a growth industry. While I don't think we can build empty space, the whole package of this, we will, and the Building Commission is looking at who would move into the space being vacated by the public defender and county attorney. We're going to have a whole bunch of prime space on the ground floor of the courthouse sitting empty, possibly sitting empty. And the county's still going to be paying rent on that space to the Building Commission, by the way. So it is a big, complicated picture. I hope that we can end up affording this. It's a beautiful dream. Once the economic reality sets in, then we start having to question, how much can we really afford? I have heard this, maybe as much as $500 a square foot. I get we're not talking financing today. That scares me. I mean, I think the Ruska Federal Building was built at $400 a foot, and I would hope that we could end up something closer to that. The youth center itself, Chen said we could come back and do that later. If we don't have our numbers down to where this could accommodate them, that may make sense, but how our private partners want to respond is a huge factor in that as well. This is a big, big project, a big decision for us. It's great to finally get the discussion going with the public. I'm anxious to hear back from other players in the field what their response to all of this is. I look forward to any alternatives that we could be looking at. Obviously, now is the time to be doing it, before we settle in and sign the contract. So I appreciate the work that has gone on. It's a fascinating process, and I am going to enjoy watching this go through. At times, it may be a little painful. But what a great dream, what a great place to try to end up. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, just a couple, since you brought it up. I was telling Dr. Christensen, one of the last times I presented the county commissioners was when I was president of AIA Omaha Local Professional Organization, we did a shred or a study of the exorbitant property, and we presented to commissioners. I don't know if you remember that. And there were three different, we had three different teams, and all included education and business and retail as an opportunity. So that kind of frames a vision 25 years ago, and there were a lot of blank stares and wondering, you know, what, you know, how would this ever be accomplished? wondering, you know, what, you know, how would this ever be accomplished? And thanks to the Board of Governors of Exarban, we're also involved in that property, but I believe that Douglas County sponsored our process. And it was a three- or four-day effort to come up with ideas. So I think that kind of puts a perspective on what a vision means over a timeframe. And that, I think, has gone beyond really what anybody expected at the time we were talking about it. So thank you for bringing that up.
Bruce, I want to thank you too, and I want to try to just add my point on some gaps in there. I think Commissioner, it's mentioned about now and timing, and Commissioner Borgeson mentioned that, and I think, you know, to say to the public, this has been in the hopper for some years, but I think two years ago, our imminent concern was the passing of the bond issue and trying to get 911 equipment up. And I think that sucked everything out the room now that, you know, the citizens graciously passed that it made room for this, and we took advantage to go through it. But, I mean, with that said, I wanted, I mentioned last week, but in regards to what this means for size, it was mentioned last week with the youth center superintendent here, and there has been some discussion about size. When the last renovation on that center was done, they added space and it filled up quick. And personally, I think that, you know, you build and they will come. I think the number that the CHAN study created was fair, 60 or so, and I think that's doable. And I understand the concerns about it may not be big enough, but, you know, we got chance to, enough chance to change the process. To Commissioner Duda's point, I think this is going to be a big decision, biggest one that I've had here. And I think I, you know, want to echo the sentiments of Chuck Hagel in the Foreign Relations Committee that, you know, if you didn't come in and make big decisions, you should go sell shoes. And I think, you know, this is one of the deals that'll be affecting for a generation to come. You know, to their credit, you know, the youth center has accepted the challenge when they lowered their budget and made a lot of changes to reiterate to kind of go through the process. So I want to make sure to give them credit with that. But, you know, if you look over the last 15 years, other than school boards, there's been no big project that hasn't had a public-private hand, from the CenturyLink to the Quest Center, I mean, well, CenturyLink, Quest Center, CHI, whatever, to the Cancer Center, to all those buildings that are coming up there, there hasn't been one. And this has been the first big one that we've done in a while. So, you know, I think it's been an effective way for things to get done, and I think there would be a hard argument to kind of talk about the imprint that those have had on the community. But I think one point that needs to make out for sure is, you know, the part about the trauma of things and being there. I mean, we, you know, we went through a whole sequence of, you know, the state changing laws of kids being shackled just to come over here. So, and the court has a conversation every day about just the atmosphere they're in and making it more trauma-friendly. So I think the proof is there, and I think that's easy information to get to. The point about the separation of degrees of offenses, you know, quite frankly, they already separate degrees of offenses there now. That's a fundamental of youth or juvenile and a fundamental of adult. You don't house offenses that are the same. When they were getting kids that were identified with gangs, they separated them. And that's a part of doing business, and there's been no conversation about having separate facilities to do that. I think some points that need to be made on the CHAN study was, in a separate debrief, there was discussion about a campus setting. That campus setting was never hardly mentioned in 22nd because there wasn't enough room. Actually, the conversation was mentioned somewhere way out west, and everybody thought that that was just not good because there was not bus service out there. And the unfortunate thing is, most of the clientele in there is hanging, is from the eastern part of the city, so it was just not, you know, attractive in that respect. I think what's going to happen over the point in time, though, is everything's lined up for the place to be at a smaller footprint. In 2019, and it was mentioned last week, the state has mandated the change in who can be there. You can no longer be in the youth facility under the guise of safety to, you know, a child. So we are going to find some other alternatives for kids sitting there, and that number is a good-sized number that will bring us down. And so I think everybody's ready in that respect to go there from that point of view. My hope is, you know, the work that is done with the DMC piece brings us some challenges that we get, and we really make a change on atmosphere-wise. There are some discussions being happening now to try to gather data just about the number of arrests that happens and who should come there or even go through the process. And so there's a lot of things coming in that respect that I think will make the foot put amenable and just for what we need to do. You know, it was mentioned, I think, you know, we're kind of coming at this from a best, best solution is informed by, you know, we are the government, and I think that was, that was not it at all. You know, this sentiment has kind of been cultivated for, DMC is disproportionate minority contact for the people I mean, I know. You know, this discussion has happened, and, you know, I think people have come to this over a field of 13, 14, 15 years that, you know, we need to do something to some degree, and I think people have put their viewpoint in on it. People from everywhere, from the state, senators, past and present, and have, you know, challenged us to do some things, and I think we've accepted the challenge on that. So I want to, you know, thank you for your hard work, look forward to the discussion on it and engage in the public and hopefully making a decision that changes generations from here to come. Commissioner Kraft, I have you down, you wanted 10 seconds.
Yes. Back in 1979, my father was elected to the city council, and they were talking about future needs in the courthouse. Also, today, since this is about the children, if the camera would focus on my tie, this is a Save the Children tie, and there's a label on the back that says, "Save the Children." So I think my 10 seconds is up.
Very good.
Mr. Morgan.
Okay. I admire you standing there for one hour.
I'm fine.
I want to be sure. I want to state a couple of things. One is, I want to be certain, and Doug Kagan, Jeff, they participate in all our budget meetings, transparency and everything else in the public. I want to be sure that people ask us the hard questions on this as we go down this path, and that's a good thing. I also want to respond to Commissioner Duda. The fact is, I said it earlier, I don't want to be paying for vacant space. I do a little real estate, and I know what it's like to pay rent in two places, so I want to be careful about that. Now, I'm going to say something that I haven't said, I think, just to Mark and Claire Duda. I thought about it a while before CHI, but, and I know we have some public money that probably is going to come forward in this project. This may be a foolish idea, but my hope is, this building's going to be around a long time, and it's a Douglas County Justice Center. But it certainly could have two names ahead of that for a $25 million price. We'll make certain that you call on them. But I think that's something we should definitely look at as we go down this path, and it's happening more and more around the country, and I think it's a way for the public to participate in this important step. And it's going to be there 100 years, and rather than CHI paying for just 20, whoever gets this is getting a bargain price because it's going to be there a lot longer, and we get the money upfront or have the payments to subsidize us to help with that and possibly a mill levy increase. And Doug, make certain you start to prepare questions for all of us or direct them to whoever you want, and Jeff, as we go down the path, and the same thing for the citizens. And again, I can't thank you enough for the help that you've been over the past six, eight months, whatever it's been, to get to this point.
It's been an honor to work on this project.
Yeah, one more, Bruce. Commissioner Borgeson.
Uh-oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say again, I don't want the conversation to be lost when we start talking about the money issues, and that is the family issues. I hear all the time and blame being placed on families that the child's in the youth center because the parents did this or aren't doing this or aren't this, aren't that. And we have a system in place, in my opinion, right now, that does not, is not inviting for that family unit to be a part of what we do going forward with the child that's in trouble, or even the family issues that they may have. And so, again, I want to make sure that we focus on the reasons why, yes, the space, yes, all of that, but in the end, for me, it's who are we serving and why are we doing this? And I just don't want that to be lost. And the more public input that the people who are in the system, I had a person tell me that those that are part of the problem actually have the best solutions. And so we hope to gather that information as well as we go forward to see what their needs are. But you're right, Commissioner Duda, this is, this is big. This is huge. We are creating something that is going to be here for years and years to come, and we want to make sure we do it right. Thank you.
And I think PJ volunteered to be the first naming right.
Okay. Bruce, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for hanging in there. With that, we'll go to item six in public hearings. I had to make the public hearing on Tuesday, June 26, 2018, for the vacation of a portion of Fox Farm Road near Reichsmuth Road. Reichmuth.
Might have some overhead projections.
Dan, with that, we're officially a public hearing. We will open the public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Dan Kidlec, Douglas County Engineers Office. As you stated, this is the public hearing for the vacation of Fox Farm Road just west of Reichsmuth Road in Sandrich, in between Highway 275 and Highway 36. I have a few overhead projections that might help you get a mental picture of where this In that circle on this 20,000-foot elevation look is the location of this vacation request. By the way, the vacation came in through a petition from the Steinbach family, Mike and Patsy Steinbach. They are the adjoining property owners, and they also followed the statutes and got 10 electors to support their vacation, two of which were the other adjoining property owners of Fox Farm Road, so we got.
Are there any Fox Farm Roads in Douglas County?
No, this is an extension of the Fox Farm Road that's kind of in your neighborhood.
Okay, I didn't know there was any.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
As you can see, it is in the Douglas County zoning jurisdiction. This is Valley's one-mile limit, showing it a dash dark line, and this is their city limit. Highway 36, Highway 275, and Reichsmuth Road. The vacation is, let me blow up of that, just west of the interchange, and it's shown with these red hash marks areas. This is the Steinbach property that are adjacent to that. We've looked at this vacation and came to the conclusion quite quickly that there is no value to the public, Douglas County public, to use this any longer as a public road. As a matter of fact, it's been closed since the state built the interchange back in about the year 1999, 2000, 2001. Fox Farm Road was a gravel road that went right through the interchange at one time prior to the building of the interchange. Gravel Road, of course, from about 312th Street to Reichsmuth Road, and it was taken out of service with the improvement of the highway. One last view of the property. You can kind of see that it is agricultural in use. The road that's being asked to vacate, I think, is approximately right where this field entrance is located, which allows the Steinbacher's to get to their piece of property through the adjoining property owners. And they'll still have that upon the vacation. We're not vacating and landlocking this property. Mr. Steinbach is in the audience today and would be available to answer any questions. We certainly recommend the vacating to go through. We did put a value on it in case you had the opinion to put a consideration on this of a value. It's, we had some recent appraisals in this part of the county buying some bridge property. It's about $10,000 an acre. We have two-hundredths of an acre that is being requested to be vacated. Two-hundredths of an acre, that'd be about $200. So with that, I'll close my presentation, and Mr. Steinbach might want to have a few words to say.
Thank you.
Mike Steinbach of Valley, Nebraska. The biggest reason we're wanting it closed, I mean, it really, to make it, I know we could even see there was ever a road there, and we actually farmed, cleared completely through it right now. And it's just a liability issue probably for the county and for us because we actually are farming the road, which, when we bought the property, I don't know, 12, 13 years ago, we really didn't even realize there was a road there. So, I mean, that's kind of why we're just see if we get it vacated, you know? And the county doesn't really provide any service to it anyway, so that's why all we're asking to do is just vacate. I think it's around 300 feet is what it is.
Okay. This is, is there anybody else that wants to speak during the public hearing? Commissioner Boyle?
I think it makes a lot of sense, but I'm curious, is there a road that abuts it where you have to put up some kind of barricades or something on the either end of that? I can't quite get that.
Well, the, I guess you would say the east end of it is actually the fence with where the four-lane interchange is at.
Okay.
On the west end, there's, I mean, the picture you showed, it does actually show like probably maybe 30, 40 feet of driveway.
Right.
But then after that, for the next couple hundred feet, it's all being, the adjacent landowners' property, we actually farm both properties anyway, the adjacent landowners'. It's all one completely field right now, so there's just an entrance there, it's all actually there. And we're not asking to have the county start maintaining the last couple hundred feet of it or something like that.
Okay, that looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Okay, motion to approve Jolly Tent.
Sorry. I saw action. Okay. Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing. Go on, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. We're going to item seven, committee discussion and actions, letter A, finance, budget report.
So I think Doug Kagan would like to address.
We got anything on the budget? You got anything on the budget report, though, first?
Nope, I think as presented, and we'll, unless Joe has, Joe's coming.
Okay, let's, when we got a couple of questions budget report-wise. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I guess Joe's not here to answer them. I was just looking at the documents, backup documents on this, and I guess, you know, the good news is that our general fund revenue is running at 100-plus percent, so we currently have a balance of about $300,000 over and above the annual budget. And, oh, there's Joe.
Maybe we need it, Joe.
Joe, your timing's good.
Or bad.
We were just talking about the budget documents that you've submitted, and I was looking at the daily revenue-budget comparison, which shows that total general revenues at about $188.6 million, running at 100.16% to date, which leaves us with a positive balance there over budget of $295,000. And we still have time to run on this budget year, is that right, Joe?
Yeah, till.
Friday.
Sorry?
The budget will end on Friday.
On Friday. So we're going to end up with a balance above that $295,000 number, is that correct?
Yeah, most of it's in now, but it should be slightly above.
Okay, that's good news. Then I note that the inheritance tax total revenue comes in at $16 million, and that shows a variance of $5.2 million or 145. shows a variance of $5.2 million or 145.6% over expected revenues, which would leave us with a remaining balance of over $5 million. That's unencumbered.
Yeah, but 4.4 of that 5.2 is already accounted for.
I'm sorry, say again.
We've allocated 4.4 of that 5.2 positive variance.
And that was for?
The purchase of the properties across the street and also towards making a balanced budget.
Okay. And that would leave us, then, with the total revenues unencumbered of about 10 or 11 million dollars for that, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, and that's what was budgeted, and we use the majority of that in the transfers to fund, to fund operations.
Okay. And then, on the remaining balance, if we look at expenditure comparison by fund, we had a remaining balance, I guess this is dated the 22nd of June, of about $14 million. That balance will be affected by one more payroll cycle, is that correct?
Yeah, there's a payroll this Friday that's going to hit.
And then we'll have a remaining balance of, do you have an approximate number of that 14 million that will be remaining at the end of the fiscal year?
Which 14 million are you looking at?
If you look at the expenditure-budget comparison summary by fund period, the first line, which is general fund, shows if you, if you read out to the end, the difference, I guess.
Oh, there's 14 million left?
Yeah.
I would expect we may have, you know, that number will dip down to five or six million after the payroll.
So, when we come back on the 10th, that document will be in our packet, I presume, with these final numbers of all these categories that we're talking about?
The preliminary final numbers.
Preliminary final numbers, very good. But it looks like those are all going to be in the positive realm, is that right?
Yeah, but, you know, the way I always look at it is, you know, look at your total expenditures versus your, your total revenues for the general fund. And as of, when I looked at this report, the general fund expenses had been 191.2, and the general fund revenues had been 188.7. So, net-net, year-to-date, the general fund is down 2.5 million, and that the expenditures have been greater than the revenues.
Okay. Let's walk through that just one more time. So, I'm seeing the general fund total expense of 191.
Right.
Okay.
And then go to the next page, which is general fund revenues.
And that's the 188 number?
Yeah.
Okay. And that total revenue numbers is the one that I was pointing to earlier, which actually exceeded, I guess, what our expectations were by .16%, because it shows a 100.16% to date general revenues with a remaining balance of $295,000.
Yeah, and that's the tricky one to try and estimate, because revenues, people prepaid their property taxes last December in trying to estimate, you know, just how much of that is people from the prepayment of taxes, which would be a timing issue. But, you know, but you're absolutely correct that as of year-to-date, the revenues have come in strong.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, one last question. At the end of the year, then, what we're left with would go to the reserves, is that right?
Yes.
And do we have any idea what that number is going to be this year?
I'm estimating it to be around 30 million at fiscal year-end.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on this? With that, we'll go to Item 2, Nebraska Taxpayers' Presentation on the Recommendations to Douglas County, presented by Doug Kagan and Jeff Stevens, was put on by Commissioner Borgson. Do you want to lead in?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this is a result of our conversation that we had last week about a public hearing on our budget, and we all know that the Nebraska taxpayers have prepared for us a list of recommendations that we take into consideration each year as we do our budget and then throughout the year. So, we wanted to make sure that we gave them a chance to present their recommendations, and they're here to do that today.
Good morning, Doug.
Thank you, Commissioners. We appreciate the opportunity to present our suggestions here today. It's three pages, I'm not going to read the whole thing, it would take too much time, but I do want to accentuate some points. In the first paragraph, we know that the, there's going to be a, at least from last figures, we saw there's going to be a multi-thousand-dollar deficit, and what we believe is that the county commissioners should take this opportunity to make additional budget cuts to handle future budgets, not just to fill in the deficit, but handle future budgets that will necessarily increase because of the Juvenile Justice Expansion Project. And I'll skip down to general suggestions on page 2. There's a, there's a lot of things that other counties around the country are, are doing to cut expenses, and some of them might regard just one department, others would regard all departments, but they seem to be working in cutting county budgets around the nation. So, what we suggest is some things, and again, I'm going to skip around here, because it's almost a long page, a one-page list.
Yeah, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. Take your time, because we appreciate the time you give, so don't be in a big rush. You hear us ramble on, so go.
Okay, thank you. We suggest you survey the number of landlines and cellphones in each department and duplicative usage. Also, decrease the number of employees sent to seminars and workshops to cut travel expenses. A lot of taxing authorities are holding more meetings by phone or video conferences. Eliminate salary step increases, because too many employees are situated at higher steps with maximum salaries. And actually, the state government has done away with step increases. You can institute desk audits to analyze workloads for employees. You could require productivity work standards for employees. You could vacate the office of County Public Information Officer, we think you're doing a good job yourselves, and delete Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube accounts. These accounts are duplicative and redundant. Eliminate vacant positions. Monitor employee computer use. Eliminate bilingual extra pay. Drop one paid holiday. Prohibit hiring back retirees on contract. Also, ratchet down health insurance payments for retirees, as retirees constitute the most expensive category in the county healthcare plan. Raise the retirement age in increments, so that fewer employees will need this insurance up to age 65. Exclusion of overtime hours for pensionable earnings. Require county employees to pay a larger percentage of their medical and dental health benefit costs. Encourage additional employees to select health savings accounts as an alternative. Arrange inter-local agreements for worker compensation because a $1,000 supplemental appropriation was needed here. Scrutinize closely all worker compensation claims. Inheritance tax revenues are much higher than projected. Use this increasing amount only for basic county expenditures. Require zero-based budgeting in every department wholly under county commissioner control. Strongly urge other departments to use it also. County health centers should provide only basic services that private entities do not provide. End professional service fee for the United Way. Terminate the following non-mandated, non-mandated services, like the library and Health Department WIC program. End membership dues in some professional organizations. End subscriptions. Lease office equipment instead of purchasing. Standardize ordering of office supplies. Send out all department newsletters online to save paper. Use both sides of paper to save postage and also use recycled paper. Combine all department food purchases. Organizing an investment system to maximize revenue and consolidating vendors for cheaper services or procedures that all departments can utilize. The county treasurer department serves as a good fiscal model for other departments here. Outsource revenue collection. Stop funding outside organizations. And we believe that if you utilize these, excuse me, suggestions, over a period of years, you can really save a lot of money for the county and also put yourself in a position that, as I want to repeat this, that you would be cutting the budget when you have a large looming expense coming from the expansion of the juvenile justice facility. Okay. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Doug. And one of the things, again, that we do hereafter is sit down with you and walk through those, so I'd be offering that and our staff to do that again this year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item B.
Go away.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Go ahead.
Jeff Stevens, 145-18 Webster Circle, and I volunteer for Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. I have a shorter document, but I think I'll just ad lib as well, because you guys can read it just fine. Looking at the summary presented June 5th, the deficit to overcome is around 2.5 million. A lot of those were departments that had a lot to do with public safety and as well as the public defender. And in public safety departments, I think, I appreciate the new budget process in that there's a lot less paperwork to look through, but part of it is, it would be really nice to see the initial targets, just to see what the priorities are in setting the departmental budgets, because it always seems like these critical departments are the ones that end up needing to be reviewed and adjusted in the end, and I'm just wondering on the, if that really sets our priorities the right way. Didn't have a lot of other stuff to look at, but I did take the opportunity to look back through prior years and what we'd done. I believe the first thing I looked at county-wise was the HMA report that was done a few years ago. And at the time, the deficit of that operation of the health center was around $12 million, made the newspaper. I looked at the adopted budget on your website from last year, that deficit grown to $16 million. So, when we have a $2.5 million deficit to overcome this year, now would that money be available if we hadn't seen that deficit? That's hard to say. But that's, first thing I looked at, I did look back at that and made that observation. The other, one of the other things that we had looked at earlier was purchase of the Greyhound bus station. I've not heard anything about it since that purchase, so I don't know if it's, they're leasing it? So, they are getting some income off of that?
That's been a really good investment.
That's good to hear.
For the future, and Jerry just walked back in, and he can give us some information.
That's why there haven't been any news accounts, because it's good news? All right, well, I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, seeing no further. Thank you all. We'll go to Letter B, Administrator Services. Item 1 is a resolution approving county funding for the County Historical Society for the next three fiscal years. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I think this is pretty self-explanatory, and my understanding is that our staff has talked to most of you about this. Basically, the continuation of a longstanding agreement that we have with them relative to their archives, which is an essential portion of any government's memory system, and this just extends our agreement for the next three fiscal years.
What's the will of the board?
Move by Commissioner Duda, seconded by Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Questions, comment? Commissioner Duda?
Quick comment. This, this has been longstanding. Before I joined the board, and I believe it was in '91 or '92, the Douglas County Board declared that the Douglas County Historical Society was to be the official archivist for the county, and that's what began this relationship that we're seeing continue today. It's been a very nice working relationship.
Okay, there's motion, a second, please vote.
Commissioner Borgson, or, excuse me, Commissioner Boyle is absent. All other commissioners present and voting yes. Motion passes.
No, Commissioner Boyle had a family issue he had to go attend to, so, for the record. Another serious, but he needed to go. Item C is the Tuesday, June 5th, 2018 minutes from the Child Youth Service Committee, as presented. We'll go to Item G, which is the Human Resources, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
The interesting thing about those, and I asked people to maybe take a look at them if you weren't there, I know that some of you missed it, is we actually go into space needs on the county attorney and the public defender in pretty specific detail, and that leads to our discussion, ongoing discussion regarding the Justice Center proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Item G, Human Resources. Item 1 is the Weekly Personnel Report. That is as submitted unless someone asks questions. There is no, are no legislative items that I know, but please note if we will be preparing the resolution for today's action items to present, for today's discussion to present on July 10th. Item 3 is a resolution to accept a proposal for the EMC Risk Services to service third-party administrator for the county's property casualty insurance. Diane, do you want to comment?
Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator. Through our purchasing department, the county recently solicited proposals for a third-party to administrate and investigate the county's claims that arise out of property and casualty insurance. And we received proposals from three companies in your packets, is a list of those companies and the fees and costs that they submitted. And after review of those proposals, there's a recommendation before you today to accept the proposal of EMC Risk Services. They are a company that the county has a current relationship with. They are also our third-party administrator for our workers' comp claims, and we've been satisfied with the services they provided. And if you look at the, the costs and the fees that were submitted, all the companies are around the same price. This is an annual fee, but our county risk management department has recommended EMC Risk Services. Anyone has any questions?
Motion by Commissioner Borgson, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
All commissioners present voting yes.
Executive session, we do have a need for executive session for personnel and litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session for the reasons of personnel and litigation?
Did Jerry have real estate?
Do you, Jerry, do you have real estate?
No.
Okay. Again, is there a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of personnel and litigation? Moved by Commissioner Borgson, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote. And personnel, personnel, no, no real estate. And we are going to executive session for personnel and litigation.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes. All commissioners present voting yes. All commissioners present voting yes. All commissioners present voting yes.